Welcome. It is September 10th. We are at the Olentangie Administrative Offices in the Berlin Room, and we are here for a regular Board of Education meeting. Mrs. Hatfield, will you call the roll?
Yes, please. Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Here.
And Dr. Weiss?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I now, I'll entertain a motion to pledge, or excuse me, I'm merging my lines here, to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Oh, yes. I did skip, didn't I?
Pledge.
We skipped the pledge.
You entertained a motion to do the pledge, which I support.
Okay, how about you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's plenty of time between now and exact session for Mr. Wright to calm down.
I know. I can only imagine. And you know what he's saying? He's saying, "Thank goodness, our staff did better going back to school than Mrs. Patrick did with the board meeting this evening." So, well, first on our, well, our only presentation this evening, I'd like to welcome our Chief Communications Officer, Krista Davis. She will be presenting on our branding update. Welcome.
Hey. Thank you. And good evening, everyone. All right. Well, I am excited to have this opportunity to share an update with all of you on our brand project, which is not COVID-related. So that's kind of exciting in and of itself. I thought we would start first with a recap of where this project has been. It's been ongoing for quite some time. So way back, we talked about the strategic plan goal of establishing our brand identity. It is one of our 12 goals that we have on our strategic plan, and it does hit all four strategic priorities that we have on our plan. So students and stakeholders, it hits the expanding community engagement and relationships when we talk about who we are and what is important to us as an organization, and allows us to provide consistent messaging across the district to our students and stakeholders. It touches within resource stewardship when we consider managing our assets wisely, when, we'll be talking in a minute about our licensing program, but also protecting our marks and identity through, which are our resources, through this priority. And then in internal processes, striving for a culture of excellence and expanding our talent management strategy. In both of these, we want to continue to attract new talent to our organization, and we are able to do that when we present ourselves very clearly with who we are and what's important to us in job fairs and in our materials and online and just our presence across the board. And then in learning and organizational development, that is where our goal of establishing our brand identity resides. And obviously, that clearly defines what we're trying to accomplish here in each of our schools and in our programs. So, as you'll recall, Phase 1 of our brand identity project was developing the district level brand identity, which was launched in April 2019, which seems a minute ago and forever ago. And then our Phase 2 began shortly thereafter, about a year ago. We started with our elementary school brand identity projects. And so we are, as you know, in Phase 2, talking about each building in our district, preschool through high school. And so throughout this school year, we have worked mainly on our elementary school brand identity projects. And just this August, we were able to launch all of our elementary schools and our preschool brand identities. So we'll be sharing that here in a second. While that's been going on, we were able to begin our middle school projects in the spring, and we are wrapping those up this fall, and we'll start in with our high school projects next. So this was a little bit slower of a timeline than we would have liked to have had happen because we were on the ballot and had a pandemic that happened, school closure, all those fun things. So we have still been able to meet via Teams with our different brand group, project groups, and navigate through all of the other more urgent issues and still continue to move this forward. So the elementary branding development process, our goal was to create specific brand identities for each elementary to build school pride and to really help each school community identify and relate with their current school and not necessarily a future potential school. So what we've found across time in our district is a lot of our elementaries without a brand identity or mascot would relate to a given high school that they maybe thought that they were going to attend, but by the time they got to high school were perhaps redistricted to another location, or just that was not the brand or the identity with that particular school. And so working with our agency, marketing agency that we worked with, with the district brand, Colt Marketing, we created brand project teams at each school that consist of administrators, teachers, parents, and they are able to represent the student voice by having students weigh in in small groups. And so they were able to meet several times with myself and our Colt Marketing partners throughout the fall of last year and the early winter. And then they each submitted three mascot options. We reviewed those, and then Colt Marketing began to work on those sketches and logos. And then we finalized those in the spring and then gave that brand project team a sneak peek at what we were working on. And then they created the reveals to welcome their students back in August. So a lot of creativity occurred there. Our parameters, since we have no mascots at the elementary level before this, the guardrails that existed for our elementaries were to select an animal or an insect, to, if possible, have an alliteration to make that, you know, consistent and fun. And then just a word about colors, we didn't necessarily want the colors to ladder up to a middle school or high school in the district because we wanted their identity to be their own unique identity. And so what they've chosen, what they have is Olentangie's blue as their primary color, and then an additional color that goes with their mascot. Then we took the Berlin logo as a guide for what we were going to do. And so we used the primary blue color, Olentangie blue, and then the secondary color within the mark. And then we used both the district name, the school name, and the building level name. So you'll see that in each of our new logos. Each school received brand guidelines and then a primary school logo with their school name, like I just showed you, a secondary logo with the mascot name, and then a mascot head and face. And then each school is getting a retractable banner and a vinyl cut wall So I will share these mascots with you. You may have seen them on social media, but if you haven't, this should be exciting. So we've got the Alum Creek Cardinals. And with Alum Creek, they significant, they use the arrow a lot within their PBIS goals, their behavior goals within their building. And so we wanted to be able to reflect the importance of the arrow to them, as well as use the Cardinal for their mascot. And that was something I didn't mention that in all of these brand project meetings, we talked about PBIS goals and behavior characteristics that they emphasize with their students and tried to incorporate that in our conversations as well. So then we've got the Arrowhead Hawks. The Cheshire Cubs. The Freedom Trail Falcons. The Glen Oak Goats. They like to say GOES goats because they use their, their little acronym for their name.
Is that, is that blue?
It's blue. And it might show better on this screen for you. And then we've got the Heritage Huskies. The Indian Springs Squirrels. The Johnny Kate Corners Jackets. Liberty Tree Larks. Oak Creek Owls. Olentangie Meadows Mustangs. And we have our preschool Penguins. And these Penguins will show at the different locations that our preschool is situated at around the district. We have the Sayota Ridge Rams. And Tyler Run Tigers. They already were the Tigers, so that worked out well, but we did update their imagery. And then the Walnut Creek Bees. And Walnut Creek was the only other building at the elementary level that had an existing mascot that they really had fully developed. So we stuck with the Bees for them. So that's why that's not an alliteration. And then the YN.Run Wildcats. And then we also have plans for the next elementary to go through this process so that when they open in the next fall, they'll have their mascot. And so then here is our family all together. So you can kind of see how they all work together. So the idea, if you recall from when Phase 2 began, we talked about wanting every school to have their own unique individual identity, but to all, to feel part of the bigger one Olentangie family. And so that is our family.
Love it.
And then I have some just fun reveal pictures. So everyone did neat things over the last couple weeks as they revealed their mascots. Got lots of signage, t-shirts, masks, all sorts of fun things. Several schools were able to, yeah, there was, there were live goats. There were also live rams.
Wow.
Sayota Ridge. But they, you'll see Glen Oak did their reveal in conjunction with kindergarten registration. So each kindergartner came and got to take their picture there. And some of the other schools did this as well. And some schools had the clues on social media.
They quickly started using it all in their messaging.
Oh, yeah. Who missed you?
Yes. There, yeah, they're already using it in there.
Oh, look if he's got his mask.
They're all so cute. And then we thought we would share a reveal or two with you. So this one.
Hi, Arrowhead. It's Bridgette McMillan, your building principal. And I am so excited to finally be able to unveil our brand new school mascot. So without further ado, here we go.
Arrowhead Pride is White!
So, so that's Arrowhead.
Hi, Arrowhead. It's.
And then we'll just show one more. I think we're gonna do the Heritage one?
No, I do need Springs.
Good afternoon, Heritage families.
Sorry.
If you've been tuning into Instagram all week, you know that we've been giving clues about our new Heritage mascot.
Sorry, Heritage.
So you're headed to Indian Springs? It's that way!
Hey, can you see that?
Yeah, I did. Looks like it said home.
You're here! We've been waiting for you!
We're so excited to see you! The kids are gonna be so ecstatic! Hold on, let me get a picture of you!
So, yeah, we love the creativity of our squirrel friends there. And there are many more out there that you can find on social media. And if you're really interested, I can send you links of all of them if you want to see what everybody has done. They really got creative with it. So, super excited about that. And now moving on to middle school. As I mentioned earlier, we've already, we're pretty much to the middle or two-thirds of the way through our middle school project. And so each of our schools has had a team that's met virtually several times throughout the past several months. And we are currently at the point where we've spent a lot of time talking about the existing building culture and identity and mascot at each building. And so they're keeping their mascot name and colors, but we're really talking about how they, how they represent themselves, what their culture is in their building, and working on updating their imagery to fit that and then also fit within our unique brand of our one Olentangie family. And so each middle school currently is looking at their first draft of their designs and either moving forward to adding the colors or making a few minor tweaks and, and moving forward. So we, we expect to be able to be finished with that here in about mid-fall.
Wow.
I'm not sure how we'll reveal those yet, but I have no doubt these teams will come up with creative ways. And also, just a quick word, this soliciting the student voice here has been asking kids to draw what Hyatt's Eagles means to them, what Liberty Middle School Warriors means to them. And so that's really been amazing to see how, how they pull together some of the culture pieces that they've heard within their buildings, a lot of their, again, their behavior goals and, and characteristics that they would like their students to have in their building. And then for our high school, which will come next, our high school level, we will, again, have brand project teams with administrators, teachers, parents, and solicit the student voice as well. We'll probably have bigger project teams at the high school level because they have the athletic piece that also contributes to their unique school identity. And so, again, each high school will retain their current mascot name and colors, and we'll talk about what their building culture is and what they would like to see within their visual identity, school logo, and mascot moving forward. They'll each receive a brand style guide at the conclusion of that project. And so we'll start those as soon as we're done with the middle schools and hope to complete that in the spring so that we can roll that out at the end of the year. And so things that are purchased for the upcoming year can begin to be purchased. So one of the things I've said at each level is we're not looking to throw away good things to just buy new. And so it's not like everyone's gonna have to buy new uniforms and new turf and all of the things that have current marks on, that those would be things that would be replaced as new is needed. And then we are finalizing our licensing program. We have been going back and forth with a vendor, K-12 Licensing, that specializes in K-12 licensing as well as higher ed. But they have worked with, it's probably more at this point, 5,800 high schools across the country. They will help with the application process for vendors to become licensed vendors, our royalty collection, working with insurance companies and factory disclosures. So it's, you know, something as simple, for example, as a face, a temporary face tattoo. You know, you want to make sure that the ink is not something that somebody would have an allergic reaction to, and you'd have a potential lawsuit on your hand to, you know, the materials in a t-shirt and the dyes and things like that. But also assist with marketing and working with all of those bigger box stores like CVS, Walgreens, Meyer, Kroger, et cetera. And so they will be helping us start launching that here, hopefully within the next two, three weeks.
One of my goals before I, before I retire is that you walk through Krogers and see officially licensed.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. You can hopefully retire then in December.
Oh, hey, there you go.
Just kidding.
Thank you. I guess I walked right into that one.
So with that overview, what questions do you have? If any.
Yes, I was just in Target this week, and I saw all the Liberty, Unlicensed Liberty. So just so the community understands that this is part of the process that we have to go through so that we can license and trademark our things and be in control of who sells them, and they pay for that.
Right. And then we also can control the quality of the marks and that they're consistently used and not distorted in any way as well.
That's great progress. Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome. Absolutely.
I can only imagine what the middle schools will do, especially after seeing Shanahan's big production for back to school. Did you all get to do that? Yes. Love it. Well, thank you, Mrs. Davis. We'll move into the President's Report. I have just a couple comments, so I'll be super brief this evening. Since we're here, I hope you were able to set your DVR. If you weren't, please visit Channel 10 because tonight is a story that demonstrates a true, a true act of compassion and kindness in our one Olentangie family. I personally have the privilege of knowing both of the families. Scott Davis, he is a Liberty High School math instructor. He was my daughter's Algebra II teacher. He received a kidney from middle, Orange Middle School teacher Christine Snively this summer. And Christine found out that Mr. Davis was on the transplant list. She was tested and found out to be a match. So I think that this is something very newsworthy, positive, and worth celebrating. Her gift to the Davis family is the most generous gift a human can give another. And I ran into Christine and her husband Ryan, who was my, was my son's math teacher last year, and she looked fantastic, like you would never know. She just had transplant surgery. She was glowing, and I asked how she was, and she's like, "Well, how are you?" I'm like, "No, how are you?" She was doing well and excited to return to school the next week. So make sure that you check that out. I've seen it on social media, and I'm, that was a, a post I read. I also wanted to celebrate the opening of the 2020-21 school year. It went off amazingly well. And I know everybody holds their breath for those first few days. I don't know why, because our staff always kicks it out of the park. So why would this year be different? Well, maybe because we changed every process. And, but again, our staff rocked it despite all the challenge, the new challenges before them. And I think that that is a true testament of how amazing our staff is and their level of dedication. So congratulations. Take the time to celebrate that. I hope they celebrated on the long weekend and pat yourselves on the back.
But not too close a celebration.
With their own families.
Yes.
So I don't have anything else this evening. Does anybody, okay, well, let's move on then to the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Rafe?
Yes. Welcome. Welcome, everyone. Virtually, also. I share that sentiment about the opening. I think it went as well as we could have hoped for. Obviously, there's a lot, a lot of lessons to be learned. But we started, as everybody knows, with Orientation Day for kindergartners and for sixth graders and for ninth graders, everybody that was new to a building. So you see some pictures there. I got out and was at Arrowhead, actually, and the new kindergartners were walking in, and the teachers had a big tunnel for them. And they were, God, they walked so slowly. They're so cute. So, and then we had the two opening days, first days of school. Obviously, you know, you can't start a school year at Berlin High School without a pep, pep rally. But, you know, it was just, it was great to see everybody back out in the buildings. And, you know, overwhelmingly, I just heard so many positive things. People just happy to be back, both students and staff. So as we know, a lot of, a lot of hard work, but a lot of people went into this. And I think there's, there was a lot of apprehension. I'm not sure how things would go. The kids are doing an amazing job wearing the masks. They, far, far better than I, I could, I could. I mean, I'm just amazed at how well they're doing that, and our staff is being highly supportive. So all in all, a good first two weeks of school, you know, and we'll continue to get better at it. These are some pictures from our CDL kids' first days of school. You know, we're really trying to make sure that we keep them engaged as part of the, their schools and their, their own buildings and as a part of the district. So, you know, obviously, there's always going to be some bumps along the road with, with, with everything. We're having some minor, some technology problems dealing with cross-enrolled students because they have to be enrolled in a virtual environment and still be maintained and roll in their building. So we've got some software glitches. We're feverishly working on trying to resolve, but we'll get there. We'll get there. It's been, it's only been two weeks, so we will get there. So just want to, you know, just as a, again, highlight to the CDL program, this was a sculpture creativity challenge. So they had to use household items to create a self-portrait of themselves. So I wish they would have put the picture of the kid along with the creative self-portraits.
Like the one with the mask. Cute.
Yeah, right. Right. So I hope everybody's really happy to see the progress on Elementary 16.
Amazing. Something they changed from our last picture.
It is amazing. If you drive by Peachbloom Road up there, west of the tracks, you'll see Rising from the field. Our 16th Elementary, structural steel is, is up, and, you know, they're gonna be starting the structural steel on the roof here very soon. And then the outside block walls, so they'll be all enclosed by, hopefully by, by December and ready to roll through the inside. I did talk to the county. They just awarded a contract to build the road from Peachbloom down to our entrance. So right now, there's a temporary entrance. So they'll be breaking ground on what'll be that northern portion of North Road that will eventually get extended all the way down to Shanahan. So we are in the middle of our COVID-19 notification process. Lot going on with this. As we, you know, again, we're gonna be completely transparent with what's going on in our buildings. So when we do have a positive case, we will be sending letters to notify staff and parents. We sent out this notification process to the community on Wednesday so that everybody's aware of how we're gonna do that. We're in constant communication with the Health District and back and forth about as we're made aware of cases or if, you know, we're made aware of a case by a staff member, making sure they have to notify the Health District who confirms a case and then notifies us back. The governor has recommended that every district create a dashboard that shows exactly how many cases they, we have in the, in the district. So that will be going live for us tomorrow. I couldn't, I thought I had a picture of it, but, so, so again, we're gonna be transparent with all this as we continue to move forward and, and continue to manage COVID-19. Just a quick update. I'm sure you saw the message we sent out with regards to food service. So you see, the USDA did extend several of the waivers. So starting Tuesday, September 8th, everybody enrolled in our schools can receive one free breakfast and one free lunch in each school. and one free lunch on each school day. And I said "one" very strongly because if a kid buys two lunches for some reason, they have to pay for the second. They get the first one for free, but they have to pay for the second. So they still could be incurring lunch charges. So that, the meals are available to everybody, whether it's they're on the hybrid attendance model or the distance learning model, committed distance learning. When they're on the hybrid model, they can come get their meal on their virtual day. So right now, the waivers are currently extended through December 31. So, or until the funds run out, according to Bethany. So we're continuing, again, it's just, you see, there are no pre-orders needed when students are learning at school, but on their other virtual days, they have to preorder their food. And then, you know, again, I wanna make sure everybody hears. If kids, the, kids, a full meal includes an entree, two vegetables, two fruits, and a milk. That's what they have to take to get it for free. If they don't take the full meal, they're charged à la carte. So I would encourage all the kids to take all their food, especially 'cause it's all good. But again, if they do, if they don't get a complete meal or buy things à la carte, they will be charged as normal. So I know some of you have gotten questions about that, so I wanted to make sure we talked about that tonight. So with that, there's our important dates coming up. Tonight is curriculum night for our grades K-2. And then you see there, the other curriculum nights. We do have a non-attendance day on September 21 for our scheduled professional development day, which, again, we need to keep doing that for our staff, especially with all the things, you know, as you know, our focus is on, excuse me, the racial diversity and...
Inclusion, equity.
Equity inclusion. Hold on, I lost that word again. Equity inclusion and student well-being, what? Oh, forget it. I'll say, I'll come back to it. Sorry. Obviously, our next board meeting is in two weeks, September 24. There are three words. I gotta get those three words burned in my brain. Any questions?
A comment?
Yes, sir.
The One Tangie Education Foundation on Tuesday evening voted to support the teachers with the grants program again. And what was interesting from that was a lot of attention was paid to the CDL and how to support the program. And Jack did a nice job of describing the needs, et cetera. So for instance, artwork, you know, how did they do art remotely? So those grants support that effort as well as the customary requests. So it was good.
Davis, the 20, the, they had a fundraising initiative because they didn't have their annual fundraising event this year. Did that go well?
Yes, it went extremely well.
Oh, good.
Twenty dollars and 20 cents. Did I do that right? Twenty twenty? Yes, they did very well with that, exceeded what they thought. I think it was around $9,000, I think, that they came up with on that. And they're still receiving some pledges.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Mrs. Hatfield, will you please present your treasurer's report?
Yes. Glad to take my mask down so my glasses quit fogging over. I haven't figured that trick out yet. Just wanted to give you one funding update, a quick update on the CARES Act Broadband Connectivity Grant. Let's go back. I'm gonna leave it there for just a moment. At our last meeting, we talked about that grant being available to help with connectivity issues that some students may be having as we work toward, work on our hybrid and our CDL learning capacities. And so with that, we also knew that the grants would be restricted. Each school district could apply for up to $250,000 to help with Wi-Fi connectivity and other instruments that might help our students get connected to the internet. But that was also going to be restricted by the number of applications that were received. And so we have our final award amount for $137,000. $137,000, $82.57, forgive me, I forgot the 82.57. So a little less than what we applied for. Mr. Sexton applied for just over $200,000. And so what we will do is adjust that spending plan so that we're within the parameters of that award. But those dollars have been received, and we'll move forward with the processing of those items. So just a quick update on that. And then the only other item that I have for this evening is just to highlight our treasure action item, or one and only this particular board meeting, is our health insurance premium changes. Each year, we go through an annual process of having the insurance plans rated. We take a look at our claims. We take a look at what the vendors are telling us the claims ratios are, where they think our cost should be for the following year. We talk about where our fund balances are and any kind of contractual language that might apply to any rate guarantees or items that we need to consider. So for 2021, we have a medical insurance increase that we will have before you for approval at a 2.5% increase for 2021. Dental insurance has a 6% increase for recommendation for this evening. And then our vision insurance with VSP, we have no increase. And Mutual of Omaha has no increase on our life insurance, which is a board item. But there's also an opportunity, excuse me, for voluntary life insurance for the employees for additional coverage if they would like. And neither of those pieces will have any rate increases. So to go back and talk a little bit more about the medical insurance, again, we look at our claims ratios. We have talked previously at other board meetings about the impact of COVID-19 and how it really kind of slowed down the amount of everyday claims that we have. Any kind of PCP visit was really slow. Any kind of elective surgery, of course, was closed down because of COVID-19. So that had a good impact on our claims dollars and allowed us to have lower-than-expected costs there. But we're also having good utilization in our high deductible health plan, which is what we had tried to work on with our negotiated agreements with our associations to make sure that we were educating our staff and showing the benefit of that high deductible plan and offering some HSA support. So the plan is working. It's moving forward in a positive way. MMO had rated us at about a 7%, but looking at all of the information we have from our actuarial information to our claims information, I'm recommending a 2.5% increase. This will help us gain a little bit on our reserve balance, but will really give the staff and the Board of Education a slight break in the cost of the premiums because that is a cost share for both the board and the individual staff members. So we're happy to be able to recommend that cost savings as we move forward. For our dental insurance, we partner with Delta Dental. That is a new partnership. When we shopped all of our coverages and our partners that provide us with these services and benefits for our staff, we went, we moved from MetLife to Delta Dental. They've been a great partner for us these last couple of years. The 6% rate increase that we are recommending tonight for approval is based upon the rate cap or guarantee that they offered within the three-year contract when we went through the RFP process. Originally, the first year, we had a negative 7% reduction in the cost of dental insurance. Last year was a 0% increase and 6% is the cap. When we looked at our actuarial information, we were actually over that 6% cap at about 10% to 11%. But the cap will apply from our contract. So we were glad we negotiated that during that process. And dental insurance for the district is a much smaller portion of the insurance cost as compared to our medical insurance. It's about an $83,000 to $85,000 increase to the Board of Education. And it's a smaller rate to begin with, so it's a small increase to the staff as well. So very happy with where those came in this year for approval. Are there any questions as to how we came to these rates or how the plans are operating?
I have a question.
Yes.
What's the percentage of people that we have participating in the high deductible plan now?
All the memberships that we have, we have about a 66, excuse me, 60% of the staff that are enrolled in our health coverage are on the high deductible plan, which is great. We finally flipped that from, gosh, it was almost reversed that three, four years ago. Most of the folks were enrolled in the PPO plan. The traditional PPO plan is a little bit more expensive on the premium, but there is less cost sharing at the point of service. You have co-pays and regular things like that, but you don't have to reach your deductible. So it's not a plan that helps the staff be mindful about where they're going for services and checking about costs and where those dollars are being spent as they receive their services. But the good thing about either plan is that our wellness checks are covered the same on both plans. So for example, if you have children and they need to go to get their annual well checks, those are covered the same on either plan as is an adult wellness check. So we're very grateful that we have that in place so that we know those well-service checks are getting done and helping the staff stay healthy. Are there other questions about the plans?
No, thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Do we have any public participation this evening?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, well then, Mrs. Hatfield, will you please present your treasure action items?
Yes, please. I would like to present treasure action items A and B for approval, please. So moved. Second.
Dr. Weiss, okay. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Rafe, your superintendent action item, action item, please.
Yes, ma'am. Before, the professional development focus is anti-racism and sense of belonging. Those are the two topics tied together. That I lost.
You found it.
Yes, thankfully. Thankfully, other brains are working. I'd like to present superintendent action items A through E, please, for approval.
I move.
A second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll now undertake a motion to move into executive session as permitted by Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code to Consider Employment of Public Employees, Section 121.22, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees as permitted by Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code to Consider the Purchase of Property for Public Purposes. Do I have a motion?
I'll move. And could I mention something I should have said earlier?
Please.
Real quickly. You just cued my memory. The OEF the other night, also in part of the grants, is going to sponsor the main speaker at the One Community event again.
Oh, good. Oh, they are. Wonderful. Do we, do we know who that is yet? I mean, you don't have to reveal it now, but...
No, I don't, Jack knows, but I guess let them reveal it.
Okay, great.
Oh, okay.
True, there you go.
Gotta do an unveiling.
Okay, and do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
We will now go into executive session, and we will only come back together to convene and adjourn.
Yeah, we have to go up to the orange room.
I think we have to vote to go into executive session, right?
We just did.
Oh, we just did, sorry.
I looked at you and you said no. Okay, is there anything else we wanna vote for since Mr. O'Brien? Hey, it is 8:15 PM. May I have a motion to adjourn this evening?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Weiss. Anyone else? Kevin?
Yes.
Thank you for the second. Please call the roll.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're adjourned.
Adjourned at 8:15.